We're calling.
All over for Franks.
Here we go.
Should be on the job.
Are we on that?
Yeah.
Okay, we're calling order the Parliament meeting for the Board of Education for November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. We have the public comment. November fourteenth, twenty twenty four. The Board of Education. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, we have from Rincon, it's good, Olivia Luna Duran, if you could come up, please, and do the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Everyone, please stand, put your, or everyone, please stand, remove your caps and hoods, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our roll call, everyone is here this evening. Moving on to our report out of closed session, we do not have one. Moving on to the approval of the agenda this evening. Any motion?
I move approval.
Second. Oh, thank you.
Oh, shoot.
And the agenda is approved, you know, absolutely five zero. Moving on to the approval of minutes for October third. Move approval of the October third minutes.
Also, second.
The minutes of October third are approved, five zero. Moving on to the approval minutes of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. Much to approve. Thank you, second.
Second.
Thank you. And it passes four with one upstate. Yeah, moving on to recognitions, D one.
Yes, so we are very happy once again to have an opportunity to celebrate our students from across the district. And so this evening, we're going to begin with Rincon Middle School, and then we have a highlight video to share.
Hello, I'm Steve White, proud principal of Rincon Middle School. At Rincon, our Bulldogs bark, believe, achieve, respect, kindness. Please take a moment to check out some of the great things happening at Rincon Middle School.
At Rincon Middle School, project-based learning is a key component of our educational model in language arts.
Our students are working on a save the world project.
You heard that right, seventh graders are researching issues they care about.
Water pollution.
And creating action plans to combat global problems.
Some of them are making animations.
Toxic substances usually come from improper disposal of chemicals from industrial plants.
Posters, some of them have made websites.
We're trying to have a legitimate dig site here with the driving question, what is culture?
Do you want to brush off the artifact?
This social studies class is digging up the past.
Okay, document that.
To learn about different eras of civilization.
And try to decide what was this culture like? What can we learn about these people from the artifacts and fossils that we found?
Rincon has its own unique culture. The many murals here on campus are a reflection of the students' thoughts, feelings, and dreams.
They're promoting unity, diversity, kindness.
They're made right here in art class where students work on projects under deadlines for real clients.
For example, we have an ASB mural that's due today.
Providing support for the school, the district, and beyond.
I want to accomplish trying to make a difference here.
Our student leaders are making a difference by planning campus activities and preparing decorations. In ASB, our students' voices are heard.
I always have a word in thing, and it's really nice.
School choir. And advanced orchestra showcase the talent, hard work, and passion inside these young musicians.
Hey, let's rotate stations, here we go.
Once a week, Bulldog PE visits our state-of-the-art fit lab.
This is curls, this is incline, fly, sit-ups, step-up, lunge, calf raises, don't forget burpees.
And a whole lot more to help tone muscles and build healthy habits.
They have to eat right, work out correctly, and that will hopefully make them feel a lot better about themselves.
Flipping the perfect pancake takes practice, practice, practice.
Use your hand like this.
These students are the perfect age to learn kitchen skills and nutrition knowledge.
If you can't go out in the world and know about food groups and know how to eat well, it turns into a health problem in society.
Did you know you can finish high school with two years of college credit? These Bulldogs do because of a presentation about middle college brought to you by Rincon School Counselors. They're here to guide the way for all of our students' needs.
Whether it has to do with student attendance, their social emotional well-being, their grades, no matter what it is, we tend to step in and support our students.
If Build a Robot is on your to-do list, you might just be in Rincon's first Lego League Robotics Club. It's just one of our awesome after-school enrichment programs that help our kids explore their many talents and abilities. At Rincon Middle School, our students are the future.
And next to invite up Principal Steve White.
Good evening, I'm Steve White, the proud principal of Rincon Middle School, President Houston, board members, Dr. Barra, cabinet members. I have the pleasure of recognizing three Rincon Middle School students who exemplify student excellence. I would like for our three students to come join me at the podium at this time. I would also like to recognize their family members, friends, and Rincon staff members who are celebrating our students' accomplishments this evening, please stand, family members, Rincon staff. I begin with Dane Nash, sixth grade student. Dane Nash is responsible, punctual, and motivated, and he can be counted upon to set a positive example for others. His peers look to him as a leader, and he supports others in reaching their goals. Dane is an outstanding athlete who also excels academically. His teachers report that his many outstanding characteristics truly reflect those identified in EUSD's learner profile. Congratulate Dane Nash, sixth grade. Next, I'd like to introduce Daniela Nagal, seventh grade student. Dani Nagal exemplifies the qualities of being an effective communicator and critical thinker. She is articulate and engages in well-thought-out conversations with any person in the room. She speaks with confidence and knowledge gained from being such an avid reader and a prolific writer. Her arguments are backed up with facts rather than emotions. Additionally, she exhibits a strong sense of fairness, kindness, and respect to others, making her an ethical scholar at Rincon Middle School. Congratulations to Dani Nagal. And I close with our eighth grade student, Olivia Luna Duran. Olivia Luna Duran is an exceptional eighth grade student at Rincon Middle School who consistently maintains a 4.0 GPA. She always strives to do her best in all her endeavors, is a model student in the classroom, and sets a positive example for her peers. As an empathetic collaborator, she actively helps other students with their work, showcasing her kindness and her willingness to support others. Olivia's efforts often go above and beyond in all she approaches, making her an outstanding example of student excellence at Rincon. Congratulations, Olivia. Everybody, I'm getting closer picture. Are we ready? All right, anybody else? We need to close our picture right up here.
And next, we will be honoring Juniper Elementary, so we have a highlight video for them.
Hi, my name is Brooke Cottingham, and I'm the proud principal at Juniper Elementary School. At Juniper, we are on the move, building relationships, collaborating, and exploring the world around us. I am excited to share with you what makes Juniper a special place in the Escondido Union School District community.
At Juniper Elementary, classrooms are exciting places. We use a variety of active learning strategies to emphasize thinking and engagement. TK students are getting a jump start in literacy.
I.
With Orton Gillingham styled exercises.
Preparing them better for kindergarten, and it's preparing them to be better readers overall.
A butterfly landed on your arm, it's beautiful.
Second graders really get into character for Reader's Theater. It strengthens vocabulary and confidence.
What I love about it is it lets them take their character to life, it helps them become more fluent.
Fill up that drip cup one time, and then you watch what happens.
Hands-on learning in science is a highlight in any Juniper student's day.
When I look around the room, I'm seeing the excitement on their faces because they love science.
From studying erosion to learning the importance of worms, our kids gain an appreciation for how the world works.
What we're trying to do is develop an understanding that so many insects and other critters that live in the earth are extremely important and beneficial.
Welcome to the kindergarten, a partnership with the nature collective takes the classroom outdoors. The pollinator garden attracts all kinds of visitors.
Remember, it's called a carpenter bee? It doesn't sting.
And students are inspired to share what they've learned.
Just the writing and the illustrations that they can do, they have so much more to talk about.
From the lunch tables to the playground, our students help each other create a safe, peaceful environment. Members of the fifth grade safety patrol are there to offer a helping hand to Juniper's youngest students. Juniper students engage regularly in social emotional learning by watching Pause for the News.
There is a lot going on this week, starting with today.
The show is anchored by students and shines a spotlight on school positivity.
Branches up or hands at heart.
Namaste, staying after school is fun with enrichment activities like yoga club.
Getting them to be able to focus, control their emotions, be thoughtful, that'll make them wonderful adults.
And students showcase their talent, performing in one of the school's musicals.
It gives all kids a chance to be successful.
At Juniper Elementary, our community of educators and families are making the future bright and preparing our kids to make the world a better place.
And next, we'll invite up Principal Brooke Cottingham.
Good evening, Board President Houston and the EUSD board members, Dr. Barra and the EUSD cabinet members. I'm excited to recognize three outstanding Jaguars from Juniper Elementary. I'd first like to recognize the Jaguar staff and the parents and families that we have here tonight to celebrate these incredible students. We are truly lucky to have such an amazing school family that comes together to support our Jaguars. Thank you for being here and being part of their journey. I would like to start with Abraham Penya. He has been part of the Juniper family well before he started TK, helping in the Juniper classrooms alongside his mom. Abraham now leads Juniper School as our ASV president. After being our ASV treasurer for fourth grade last year, he leads by listening and trying to understand the needs of others. In his role as president and pause for the news anchor, Abraham's skills as an effective communicator are put to the test. Abraham has no fear speaking in front of six hundred students, especially when he knows how important his communication is. When I talked to him about coming tonight, he wanted to speak, but I said he gets the night off. He's also a member of the Kinder Safety Patrol, where he is an expertise at being a community or creative problem solver. He leads the kindergarten students in the right direction. Abraham's work in the classroom parallels his work around Juniper. He's a top student, well-respected by his peers, and an excellent role model for all of our Jaguars. We are so fortunate to have a student like Abraham Penya. He embodies the spirit of the Jaguar way. The next student I would like to honor tonight is Carlos Alva Rodriguez. He has been a Juniper Jaguar since kindergarten. He entered Juniper as an English language learner and successfully reclassified in third grade and quickly rose to the top of his class. Carlos is a perfect example of an ethical scholar and an empowered learner, consistently achieving high scores in all areas while continuing to work hard, be a friend to all, and support those around us. He eagerly volunteers to work with other Jaguars, both in and out of the classroom. As a fifth grader, he's not only an active classroom participant, he's also a Jaguar leader. As an effective communicator, he's one of our anchors on Pause for the News, keeping our community updated. He's also a member of the Juniper Safety Patrol, helping our youngest Jaguars learn their playground expectations. He is a highly sought-after student on the playground and in the classroom. He can be seen playing basketball during recess, helping lead Friday assemblies, and working with friends in the classroom. He is respectful to all his peers and his teachers, dependable, responsible, and strives to make Juniper a safe and engaging school. Nothing will stop him, and I've never seen Carlos without a smile. All right, up next is Romelo Prince. He has been a Juniper Jaguar since preschool. For the last eight years, Romelo has been a shining example of what being a Jaguar is all about. As an empowered learner, he has maintained top scores in everything he does, and his results are always truly amazing. As a fifth grader, Romelo is not only an active classroom participant, but he demonstrates a desire to learn and support his fellow students. But he's also a leader on campus. He's one of the anchors for Pause for the News, keeping us up on the latest happenings, and he volunteers as a member of the Safety Patrol. As an ethical scholar, he participates in a variety of extracurricular activities in addition to successfully completing all classroom assignments. He serves as our ASV treasurer, using his skills as a creative problem solver to make Juniper a great place that it is. He also performs annually in part of our musical theater, and he plays on the Juniper rugby team. He's really fast. Romelo strives to make the world a better place, one Jaguar at a time. Congrats.
And next, we'll be showcasing Pioneer Elementary, and we have their highlight video.
Hi, I'm Elise Jimenez, the proud principal of the Pioneer Pumas. Here at Pioneer, we offer a safe and nurturing environment for all of our learners. We're eager to show you some of the great things that happen on a day-to-day basis, we hope you enjoy.
At Pioneer, our slogan is work hard, get smarter, and be kind. With our platinum PBIS standing, we build character and actualize the unlimited potential of every student.
You become a support system for each other, right?
Character building starts right in the classroom. In community circle, students practice kindness and effective communication.
We're teaching them life skills, how to problem solve.
Turn on the phone, okay?
Members of the Peace Patrol are responsible and caring. They ensure our TK students are safe and having fun on the playground.
Even though it is about taking care of them, I really liked playing with little kids because they're always really happy.
Welcome to Area Fifty-One, do you have your pass?
Awesome.
Bear hockey, booze ball, Nintendo Wii, there's fun for everyone in Area Fifty-One. Open Mondays and Fridays during lunch, students earn their Area Fifty-One pass with good citizenship.
Showing respect by being great helpers, encouraging and placing others' ideas.
In a global society, the ability to speak more than one language is essential.
Family stuff.
Studies show bilingual students outperform those in English-only programs.
Excellent.
Pioneer's dual-language immersion program gives students the tools to succeed.
The program itself, it just speaks for itself because we get a lot of really good results.
Mark your syllables and label them.
In the reading lab, small group instruction gets real results.
There's an N, that is a. On net, good.
Our goal is to get students the help needed to become skilled readers.
Engineers are problem solvers.
A partnership with the San Diego Children's Discovery Museum brings an interactive learning experience right to the kids. The emphasis is learning through play.
Get some hands-on learning by using those manipulatives and building things and creating things and solving all those problems just with the materials that they have.
I like it, good job trying.
PE class is where kids level up. Earning rewards by participating in our Jump Rope Ninja Challenge.
Crab walk, I like it.
And with a grant to buy gymnastics mats, kids can now safely practice tumbling techniques.
Not all sports or skills have to be team-based, they can do this individually, gymnastics and Jump Rope Ninja, and be successful.
Pioneer Elementary boasts the most options for after-school enrichment in the entire district with special instruction in art, robotics, even rugby.
You guys ready?
San Diego Legion players are on a mission to grow the sport in America.
Our goal is to get a rugby ball in every kid's hand.
Last one, I'm loving it because they're excited to learn the game.
Pioneer Elementary, where everyone strives to be positive, united, mindful achievers.
And we'll invite up Principal Elise Jimenez.
Alrighty, hello, I am Elise Jimenez, the proud principal of the Pioneer Pumas. I'd like to thank you, President Houston, board members, Dr. Barra and Cabinet, for letting me come and speak to you today. Before I begin to recognize our three Pumas, I would like to thank the families as well as our Puma staff who have come this evening. So for those of you representing Pioneer tonight, can you please stand up and be recognized? Thank you all for being here tonight, we appreciate the support. And now at this time, I'd like to welcome up three of our honorees, Ms. Rebecca, Genesis, and Anhe. Alrighty, our first honoree is our third grade student from Mrs. Black's class, Ms. Rebecca Go. Rebecca Go is an outstanding third grade student at Pioneer Elementary, and we are so pleased she is being recognized for student excellence. Her enthusiasm for learning and strong worth ethic, as well as her empathetic, caring nature, make her a model student. She demonstrates academic success in all areas and is motivated to always do her personal best. Rebecca also has many personal interests and talents outside of school, including playing piano, learning jiu-jitsu, being an active member in her church community, as well as a gifted artist. We're so proud of Rebecca, and so fortunate to have her at Pioneer. All right. Our next honoree is a fourth grade student from Mrs. Black's class, Ms. Genesis Martina Santos. Genesis is a dedicated and driven student. She joined the Puma community just two short years ago and does everything in her power to excel and improve her academic abilities. When her classroom teacher asked her what her secret was, Genesis said, I just put on my headphones and get to work, I don't let anything distract me. Genesis represents our community as a two-year participant in the Step Beyond Program and the Migrant Education Program. She takes on every challenge with tireless and enthusiastic effort. When asked to describe her, her family shared that Genesis does everything in her power to improve. She truly has a growth mindset, and she realizes her potential is endless. It is our honor to recognize Genesis as our fourth grade student champion from Pioneer. Alrighty, and our third recipient is Mr. Anhe Ramirez Lopez, a fifth grader from Ms. Edinendez's class. Anhe is a Pioneer's fifth grade student champion, and this young man has a long list of positive behavior traits, including empathy, patience, and respect that make him deserving of this recognition. His peers seek his leadership and discipline in and out of the classroom because they know he is responsible and fair. His kind heart, lively spirit, and gentle personality radiate love wherever he goes. Anhe, Pioneer is very fortunate to have you as one of their Pumas, and congratulations, you are so very deserving.
Okay, I would like to thank everyone for coming out and supporting the students this evening. We're going to take a quick five-minute break so that we can get our students back home and probably doing homework, so. Oh, I like that even better. Alrighty, we'll be back in five minutes. Alrighty, we'll be back in five minutes. Alright, we're going to reconvene. Moving on to public comments, we have two this evening. First one will be, uh, Rosio Hernandez. She's taking a photo. Okay, we will have. The next one would be Andrea Sima.
I love it when it makes that noise. Alright, good evening Board and Cabinet. Good evening to families and fellow staff who are here. And also thank you to those who are home watching and staying aware and involved. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of some staff who are grappling with what is to come. Teachers and staff are struggling with the extreme cost of the insurance. Come December, they are literally taking a cut in pay to continue working in EUSD. Not to mention inflation is still very real and it affects everyone. On top of that, the workload is tremendous and ever-increasing with new expectations that come and are continued to add on. When all is said and done, we all deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rosio Hernandez.
And okay. Um, good evening, Dr. Ibarra, Cabinet, President Houston, Board members, and everyone in attendance, in person and online. My name is Rosio Hernandez and I am EUSD. As a child, I attended Lincoln Elementary, Grant Middle School, Baguio's of Grant, and Ascandito High School. I'm currently a fifth grade, um, fifth grade dual-language program teacher at Pioneer. And I was hired in EUSD in 2012 and have had many roles in the district since then. I've been an at-will, 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 uh, reading intervention teacher, a classroom teacher, and instructional coach with Kathleen back here, um, supporting ELD, ELA, SLA, math, and DLP. I love my school and DLP so much that my husband and I decided to enroll our daughter in DLP at Pioneer for the past two years. We are the us in EUSD. When I was thinking about what I wanted to share tonight, so many thoughts came to my mind. So I speak to you this evening for several reasons. I want to thank the Board for supporting the district's vision and thank the Cabinet for your investment in the framework for the future. These are not easy tasks to accomplish. So I also want to thank all of the educators across the district who have put in countless hours and unimaginable effort to make this vision and framework come to fruition for our learners, our future. Teachers are the cornerstone of the educational system. Our commitment to educating our learners is immeasurable. And our impact on our community's future is profound. I can go on and on for hours, but you already know everything teachers do beyond the classroom walls. We serve as mentors, nurses, and counselors, providing guidance and support that oft- often extends far beyond the walls of our classroom and into the homes of our families we serve. We are the us in EUSD. You need us and we need you. In many countries across the world, the teaching profession is highly valued and respected. Recognizing teachers' hard work sends a powerful message of respect, strengthens our school communities, and reflects positively on the entire Ascandito community. Supporting teachers not only enhances our well-being, but also directly benefits student learning. When we feel valued, our morale goes up. Our motivation rises, translating into a more positive, effective learning community for our learners. It's a win-win. This means not only recognizing our work verbally, but also backing up that recognition with tangible measures, including competitive salaries and a stipend for DLP teachers. More on that later. Benefits adequate classroom resources and mental health support for our teachers and learners. Actions speak louder than words. As you continue to prepare for next week's bargaining session, I ask that you critically assess and reconsider how funds are being allocated with input from all stakeholders. I hope that you will consider actions that demonstrate a collective gratitude and unwavering support for our educators. Thank you for your attention to this vital matter, and all EUSD teachers look forward to seeing our district take steps to ensure that our teachers are valued, respected, and supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to public hearings, we have none. And going on to reports, CSCA.
But I don't got this. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. As someone already said, both virtually and present. Um, I would like to start by acknowledging the hard work of our classified staff. We recognize their dedication to the students of EUSD as each individual plays a vital role in their education. During my time as a representative of the Classified Union, I've had the opportunity to speak with many classified employees. Each of them has a unique story about why they chose to work in EUSD and specifically in the field of education. Regardless of their specific roles, they all contribute to the continued success of our students. Yet one recurring theme I have heard is financial hardship. While we understand that no one enters the education field for financial gain, we must recognize that people need livable wages. The notion that those who are unhappy with their roles can simply seek employment in fast-food restaurants is both misguided and insulting to our profession. We have many qualified individuals who have dedicated themselves to supporting EUSD students, and we should be motivated to retain them. We continue to collaborate with the district negotiations team and appreciate their willingness to listen and work with us to better serve our employees. However, we understand that their options are limited due to scarce resources. Therefore, we ask that you consider the cost of losing employees to employers who value their hard work. Please consider the commitment our employees make on the day they are hired, as well as the vacant positions that impact both students and staff. In conclusion, we urge you to prioritize fair compensation for our dedicated staff. This will ensure the well-being and retention of our classified employees as every job is important and we all play an integral part in the functioning of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Triple DA.
Good evening, President Houston, School Board members, Dr. Bar and Cabinet. I have been to several site visits so far, and it is clear that Thanksgiving is a much-needed break. What I love most about the staff in our district is that no matter how tired they are, no matter how defeated they feel, they work as hard as they possibly can because they believe that our students deserve nothing less. I couldn't be more proud of the staff in our district. I attended my first Community Schools Advisory Council meeting today at Felicita, and I was incredibly impressed with the way Sonia Schaper, the MTSS specialist, who is here this evening by the way, facilitated the meeting with all stakeholders at her site. It is nice to see our district embracing our Community Schools initiative with enthusiasm and support. As we continue to put our students first, I ask that you remember who implements these initiatives. Remember to put them as a priority in this district. Without them, you cannot and will not be successful. I see wonderful things happening, however, it is at the expense of our staff. Teachers can only take so much before they break down. Right before this school board meeting, a teacher called me to let me know that she is going on on stress leave. That is the second teacher this week that has called me crying. Please give our teachers the room to breathe, give them the validation they need. And as we maneuver through a difficult budgetary time, remember that we are not just employee numbers. We are people who love the students in this district. We do the work for them, not for you, and without our staff, the district falls apart. Make sure there is always room in your budget for our staff. Prioritize your staff over programs that you really can't afford. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to written communications, they've all been distributed to the Board. And moving on to the consent item, is there anything that the Board would like to pull or have?
I don't want to pull, I just had a comment on one of them.
Yes, ma'am.
On, um, the J9, which was the HVAC, um, or what's it called, signing off on it, um, completion certificate? Yeah, notice of completion, that it was 300,000 under budget. Is that correct? Yeah, I just was giving kudos to that, that we were 300,000 under budget for something, so I thought that was fabulous.
Any other comments? Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It is approved five to zero. And moving on to N1, no, M1.
Okay, this is our proposed meeting dates for the next year, for 2025. Uh, we worked on it a little bit in the summer, so this is, we're looking to see if there's any additional changes prior to our next meeting where we will be formally adopting these. Uh, the staff did make one change I wanted to bring to your attention. On June 5th, we moved that to June 12th. That had to do with, we have, um, it's, we needed a little bit more time between when we have, what was that, Andy, that we needed more time for? June.
Change because of the may revise, we'd only have to update our numbers based on that if we had to be first to compute.
Thank you. What was? So that was the only change since the last time we looked at it.
And the only thing I don't know if I can make is the superintendent's evaluation. I don't know if it's going to be here or not.
Okay, and that one we can, as we're getting closer to it, we can kind of move that one.
Yeah, but all the dates I can make.
And is this an action?
No, information. Information.
So is there any other requests or changes?
Okay.
Alright, moving on to N1.
Michelle, would you like to come up and talk about this one?
So apparently in 2017, we had massive floods in January and FEMA, uh, offered us assistance. The state is really slow and closing it out, and they just need us to do a resolution to sign off on the final paperwork. We already received the money. I think it was $36,000.
Okay. The whole thing, looking at the form that you did not fill out clerk, when it talks about Doug Paulson on page one, you know, C L E R, not the K, so that may want to be addressed. Has it been raised? Okay. Okay, thank you. Alright, any motion?
I move approval.
Second?
Second.
Whoops. Yeah, we put your name on everything. Just to be sure. Yeah, we just put your name. You're the one represented.
And it passes five zero. Moving on to student action. Alright, regarding student reinstatement case number 2023-24-10, move to accept the panel's recommendation for reinstatement.
I'll second.
Yeah, it passes five zero. Moving on to N3. Regarding, uh, student reinstatement case number 2023-24-14, move to accept the panel's recommendation for reinstatement with the student to be placed at a track program of the district's choice.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
And it passes five zero. Moving on to O1, first reading.
So this is a series of board policies and administrative regulations, uh, for, brought for you for first reading for our food service program. Um, some of the key points that we're bringing in, uh, we'd ask to bring into our board policies is the, uh, free meals or meals at no cost to all of our students here in California, and so updating our board policy reflect that, but there's a couple of other points in here too that are, that are, that are new in this board policy. Specifically, policy 3550, uh, for us to prioritize serving freshly-prepared, uh, meals using, uh, minimally-processed, sustainable foods. And I just want to point out that's something that we're doing more and more of now with our new upgraded production kitchen that we're able to produce foods made from scratch, uh, in that kitchen and then, uh, deliver those to all of our schools on a daily basis. And also it calls out that we're encouraged to, uh, and we've seen this, and remember when we, uh, had the workshop with our redesigned schools, is, uh, to establish school gardens and/or farm-to-school projects. And I think we saw that very clearly in a couple of the schools, uh, uh, most specifically North Broadway and LR Green, of starting school gardens and producing their own food and even participating in selling that food at their own farmers markets. So we're already doing some of the things in this board policy. I just wanted to highlight that that would then bring it in now into our board policy, as part of what the state's doing is free meals for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions? No questions? I need a motion and a second if you would like to move forward with it.
Uh, move approval of board policies 3550, 3551, and 3553.
I'll second.
Thank you. And it passes five zero. And we are already at Board members' reports.
Mark. No reports tonight, thanks.
It's not official, but. Okay, an early congratulations to you, Ms. Paul, if you're not going to officially make a statement. Um, I attended, um, the rugby games at Rincon Middle School, one of the Saturdays, um, which was really well-attended. um, which was really well attended. It, um, I mean, there were some, there was three or four, four fields and multiple schools and I, I missed, I just missed the, was it the Felicita cheer team? Yes, the Felice, the Felice has a cheer team. I just missed them. Um, but it was real, it was great to see everyone involved. Um, that same day, I also went to Grand and saw all the Halloween window painting going on from some of our students. Um, I attended the Insurance Committee, which was fabulous. And then, um, I also, no, I'm lying. Uh, I also. Um, I also attended, um, uh, multiple, um, teacher collaboration meetings at different school sites, at different grade levels to try to see how that process goes and, um, how they interact with each other. And it was great to see, um, a lot of the teachers are very, um, willing to help each other and even bringing stuff to the meeting, you know, to try to help what they were focused on. Um, and I attended the Gate Collaborative and then I think all I have left is today, uh, the Renaissance Man himself and I've attended at Orange Glen Elementary at pre, um, planting event where they had, um, a grant from SDG&E and the Healthy Days Partners. Um, they planted seven fruit trees and I have to give a shout out to the M and O team, to, um, Doug's team out there. They, the lady, um, who's from the Healthy Days Partnership who goes and plants trees all the time. She says she had never seen more perfect holes for the trees. They were so well done, so it was a great job by them and the students, uh, got involved. And Doug even planted a tree himself. I purely supervised, so.
Yeah, just wanted to, uh, point out that Doug Johnson does an excellent job of digging holes and that is what he should be known for, um. And Zesty does a great job of wearing gloves to protect her nails when planting trees. Um, yeah, just a, just a great collaboration and, uh, really good. It's a little experience. It's a small experience planting a tree, but it's huge for our kids. So just that sort of activity, it just, as simple as it may seem to us, um, it's so valuable, so valuable. And I love the presentation that, uh, the teacher, Mrs. Romano, did prior to the planting. It's like, oh, this is not planting trees. This is a lesson. This is a, a lesson, looking into the past, the present, and the future. So outstanding. Also got to attend the PTA, uh, council meeting, which as usual was very informative and extremely well-run and just want to thank all of our parents as always. Um, I've been able to, um, see firsthand the instruction going on in our classroom, which as always is absolutely outstanding. Um, I've had a couple of experiences over the last, uh, few weeks after, over the last two weeks, looking at instruction in, in other parts of the world. Um, and I'm so thankful for all of the teachers of EUSD because what we have going here is very clearly something very special. Uh, thank you.
So I don't have much to report, but I did attend the, uh, the last Gate Collaborative, which is, seems to be, um, we're, we're trying to help the parents with their, with their gay children more. And, um, I'm hoping to see more. I, I thought our number should be more gay identified students. And so I'm hoping that with the end of COVID and our intention to, to what's going on now within our educational process, that we'll see more, um, students enthusiastic about learning and helping their, their, uh, them reach their potential as well. And, uh, I also, I was happy to represent the Board at the Kiwanis Hundred Year Celebration at, in Escondido, and it was a very well-done celebration. And the Kiwanis, I have to remind everybody, you ask, we know they do wonderful things for the, to help the kids in our district. And there's the fishing derby coming up, which is always a favorite. So I'm looking forward to getting a report on that from, from you, Leonard. I know you'll be, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Sounds good. And that's.
Thank you. And I do not have a report this evening. Dr. Barr.
Yes, just wanted to wish all the staff and teachers and administrators and everyone, uh, a happy Thanksgiving. I know we're, uh, a much-needed and much-anticipated break coming soon. Um, but I continue to be amazed and, and by all the creativity that I'm seeing throughout the district. You're right, Mr. Paulson, it is very something special and just the amount of dedication, amount of focus, amount of, of collaboration that's happening throughout the district is, is truly inspiring. So thank you, everyone. Much well-deserved break for everyone.
Thank you.
And, uh, related to rugby on November twenty-third, so that's when the final tournament is going to be held for rugby championship, uh, tournament, and that's at Rincon. And then also just wanted to recognize last Saturday, we had, um, several teams go and participate in the first Lego League, uh, competition. And so we actually had seven teams participate, so seven schools were represented. And of the seven, five are continuing on to regionals. So it's very, um, exciting. And so we congratulate all of them. And again, we're grateful to those teachers who are coaching them and working with those teams. Um, and so those teams are Central, Reedy Creek, Mission, Del Dios, and Rincon. So congratulations to them.
Excited to announce that after a lot of prep work, uh, next week, if you happen to be driving by a Mission Middle School on Tuesday or Wednesday, you should see a gigantic crane and, uh, one of our two new buildings being constructed over there across those two days. So, and then by the end of the week, when you drive by, you'll see a building that didn't used to exist. So that's coming soon.
And from the HR department, I just want to wish everyone a happy and much-needed Thanksgiving break.
And just a quick follow-up, we will be putting out information in the Family Communication, but the, uh, Kiwanis Charity Trout Derby is Saturday, November twenty-third, six AM to five PM, and Sunday, November twenty-fourth, six AM to four PM at Lake Dixon.
Thank you, Randy.
Hey, can I have it back for a minute now that Mr. Levine is done? Um, I, we, Zesty and I were up at Orange Glen Elementary School today and I just need to call out our facilities people. Uh, some years ago, I would not have proudly taken anybody to Orange Glen Elementary School. The education was dynamite still. At, you know, years ago, the facility was not up to the standards. Right now, that, that school, the school plant is beautiful, well-maintained. It is, it has had a one-hundred percent transformation and it's really beautiful now. And, um, the kids are so deserving of it. Um, but it, it, I just really want to call out a- all of our facilities people because that is a, a change, a transformation and improvement. And we're seeing those transformations and improvements at so many of our campuses. Mission comes to mind, um, Grant Elementary School or Middle School comes to mind. Hidden, um, Del Dios, which is the first school that anybody sees as they come into Escondido, has become a showplace rather than, you know, prior, it, it was very dated. Um, so I just want to thank everybody for that.
We almost lost that side.
Okay, our next regular scheduled meeting will be held on Tuesday, December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven PM at the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center. We will not be going to closed session. That being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.